I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, we'll be back at 7:00. Thank you, guys.
Go back into regular session?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we have to do oath of office for Jack and Jen. First.
What am I doing? I-
You've got elected again. You want to come over there?
Oh, oh, oh.
You both have sworn in.
Do I stand up? I sit down?
You can stay there.
Oh, okay.
Just repeat after me.
Together or by myself? By myself?
You both can do it at the same time?
Okay, ready?
Yes, you can do it at the same time.
I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the State of New York-
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member. Thank you. Congratulations.
Can I have nominations for president?
I nominate Paul Shepard. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I have nominations for vice president?
I nominate Jen Horsell.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we have to do your oath of office. Paul? I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the State of New York-
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president.
Thank you. Jen?
Yes.
I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the State of New York-
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president.
Thank you. And I turn the meeting over to Paul Shepard.
Thank you.
I know, I don't like it. I want control of this. I'm- yeah, I'll read.
At this time, if we can have a moment of silence for the family and for Sidney Sodou- that was- Sodori that was killed last weekend in a motor vehicle accident. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Carolyn Schufli, the new member of the board from the student.
Hello, I'm Caroline again, Carolyn Schufli, it's nice to meet you.
Can you say your last name for us one more time?
Schufli.
Flito?
Flita.
Flita. So, I'd like to welcome everyone to the new venue. We still have a few kinks that we're working out. First and foremost, this is where we would like to end up. You'll notice that there'll be a mic because that makes it easier for us to hear you. These two speakers in the front are temporary at the moment so that any time we talk, they're not dependent on the speakers that are on the side of the house. We can actually get the sound back to us. We need to work on the lighting up here a little bit. The pink or the blue is just causing a little bit of eye strain. I know that Lucinda has been working on the sound. That will come a little bit as well. You probably hear the motor from the AC unit on the roof. We've had some trouble with that. We just got a new one installed in the last couple of days. I still hear that rumbling noise. So, they're going to have to come back and figure that out. And then, to my left, behind the curtains, that you can't see, are fans that are actually running the AC unit. Those are going to be moved to the basement this summer. So, we do have some more work that we're going to be doing in here. All of that will probably come around during our August board meeting. So, I'm not convinced that the August board meeting will be here still. But I just wanted to welcome everyone in the audience and you and the board to this new space. The other thing that will be happening is where Lucinda is sitting is that sound booth will be cut down a number of inches. It's a little too high to be able to be viewed from the pit. Part of that just is- that'll happen this summer as well. The conflict that we have is that this is an air-conditioned space, but for open meeting law, doors are supposed to technically be open. So, that's why the doors are open at the moment. So, all of your conditioning is actually going out those two doors, just so you know. But, okay, that's what I have. So, I'm starting with number four. This feels weird not- I didn't miss anything above that? No? Okay. So, item four, any requests to withdraw specific items from the consensus items? None? Okay, moving on. Routine actions, approval of consensus items. The following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum five, A through E.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Lucinda, while we're waiting for that to scroll through, I noticed that the font size for the audience might be troublesome. Are you guys in agreement with that, that it's a little small? Or are you happy? John, Paula? I can't hear you.
Good morning!
Thank you, Paula. Okay, that's helpful for me. We can stop right there. Okay. So, now, we're moving on to the regular board meeting. Nothing from the administrative administration and staff. We're back to any requests to withdraw specific items from the consensus items in the regular board meeting. Did I say who what? Okay. So, item eight, routine actions. The following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum eight, A through G.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Okay, now, on to new business. Item A, resignations. Except for resignation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of teacher aide Lynn Bidney be accepted effective June 30th, 2018. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Bidney for her 15 years of service to the district.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Can we hold for just a second? I believe we missed the- what's next?
Okay. Item B, appointments. Appoint summer laborer that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Devon Stevens be appointed as a summer laborer effective July 2nd, 2018. Salary is $10.40 per hour.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Number two, appoint summer laborer that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Kenneth Bergstaller be appointed as a summer laborer effective July 2nd, 2018. Salary is $10.40 per hour.
Second.
Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item three, yes, item three, appoint summer laborer that upon the recommendation of the superintendent James Kaminsky be appointed as a summer laborer effective July 2nd, 2018. Salary is $10.40 per hour.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item four, appoint summer transportation personnel that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following be appointed to summer transportation positions. Cynthia Casper, bus driver and bus attendant. Deborah Barton, substitute bus attendant.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item five, appoint full-time technology teacher that upon the recommendation of the superintendent Brian Smith, who is professionally certified in technology education, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the technology tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2018 and ending on August 31st, 2022 unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3212 of Education Law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 3212D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step five.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
So, I'd like you to just note that this is step five. What that should note to you is that Brian has been with us for four. That's not generally the case because people can negotiate steps if they have experience in other districts. Brian has been a part-time teacher with us. According to New York state law, for on-tenure teachers, if you've been a full-time teacher in a immediate or consecutive role, you can be granted credit toward the year previous, but that does not apply to part-time. So, by the time Brian finishes his probationary time with us, he will be with us a total of nine years. Is that right about Brian? I am thrilled to see your name on here. I can't wait for the vote because you've done a great job so far.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item six, recall from Pell, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, physical education and health teacher Amy Francisco, who was most recently .86 FTE, be recalled from Pell at .1.0 FTE effective September 1st, 2018.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
This is another one of those where in 2013, Amy's position was effectively cut in May or June of 2013. It was right when I first came. She was brought back part-time that summer, and she's been waffling around between .6 and .8 ever since 2013. It is such now that she is needed as full-time due to the sixth grade moving up, but also we've added a second grade at GLP.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C, approve accessing of books and materials, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, books and materials from the Eden Library be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D, approve accessing of miscellaneous items, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, miscellaneous items from the Eden Elementary School be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Questions or discussions?
So, what I've learned from this is that if you want to access things that are old, have a capital project because you will find things all over. So, I'm fully expecting you to see this exact same motion for the middle school, high school next year because a lot of people are moving this year as well.
Other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item E, approve accessing of calculators, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, 37 student TI-83 calculators, teacher TI-83 plus calculators, and nine scientific calculators from the Eden High School be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item F, approve leasing of bus, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a school bus be leased to the ACs group for an undetermined day in July and one day in August.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item G, approve overnight trip to cheer camp, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an overnight trip to National Cheerleaders Association Camp in Honesdale, PA from August 24th to August 27th, 2018 be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I just want to make a point that a lot of my friends went to cheer camp last year, and they really enjoyed themselves, and I think they learned a lot from it. So, I think it should be passed.
That's good to hear.
Seeing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item H, approve loner agreement with Matthews Buses Incorporated, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a loner agreement by and between Matthews Buses, Inc. and Eden Central School District be approved effective June 27th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion or comments?
Well, I know we are all wondering why we're borrowing a bus, but we had a special needs student who required air conditioning on a smaller bus. So, Matthews has agreed to, for nothing, to loan us a bus to get us through the summer school season so that his medically frail condition is not compromised.
That's awesome.
Seeing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item I, approve consulting service agreement, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a consulting agreement with the Jeska Energy Consulting be approved.
Second.
Discussion or comments?
This is the consultant who reconciles the co-gen promise for meeting energy performance agreement. So, every year, this is done, and we've hired him again to look at it. The other thing he's going to be looking at for us in conjunction is he's going to do a quick LED study for us to see if we can save some money by what the cost benefits would be.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
This is the time that the board is designated to receive statements and presentations from individuals and groups. All persons in attendance are requested to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. Okay. Item 10, information and proposals. The superintendent's report. So, Barb, not to put you on the spot, but I have a question. Generally, that public speaking session would come before new business, am I right? I can't-
Yes, but historically, for the reorg one, it's always come later because the meeting moves really quickly.
And so-
Technically, it's supposed to be about 8 o'clock.
Oh, and so, that's how long it takes us generally to get to that point? Okay, understood. Thank you for the explanation. I'm going to actually combine one and two, but what I'm really hoping for is some discussion with the board. So, in the June board meeting, the facility use fee schedule came up under consent agenda for a first read. There were a number of questions after that first read, and so, we actually pulled it off of the consent agenda. So, it's not up for approval or a second read. You do have a copy of something different. Well, you have a copy of that facility use fee schedule in front of you, but the other thing that you actually have in front of you is a potential for revision to policy number 3280, which is under community relations or the use of school facilities, materials, and equipment. So, I'm going to actually talk about the second one before I roll over onto the first one. In September of 2015, the board had conversation about exterior lighting and sound. And that conversation that you had was basically about the field lights and trying to adopt some form of times of when the lights could be on, how soon after a game they would go off, how late we would be running, the sound or the games or the lighting. And so, the recommendation from our attorney is from that draft of September 15, and you've been following it since September of 15, is to embed a policy and revision in 3280, which is what you're looking at in front of you. And so, basically, it reads this way. "The board recognizes that exterior lighting of school district property is a part of facility and grounds use in the evening hours, as well as an important component of the district's safety plan. The board directs the superintendent, in consultation with appropriate district staff, to develop an approach to exterior lighting and sound that meets the following standards," and there are five. "One, maximizes energy efficiency. Two, minimizes noise and sound spillage to neighboring properties. Three, complies with town and police ordinance. Four, meets industry standards for safety and effectiveness. And five, supports the use of building and grounds, including athletic fields, in accordance with the district's educational, extracurricular, and interscholastic programs." That is the only change or addition that's being recommended in policy number 3280. If you feel there's conversation that's warranted at this meeting or prior to the August 8th meeting, that would be the appropriate time. And then, it could go up on the August 8th meeting for a first read. The September meeting for approval and adoption is a second read. Anything beyond that in terms of times would be regulation, which you certainly are welcome to have conversation about, but it's not the purview of the board for regulation. You're good?
Yeah, I would simply add that we've certainly hashed over this, and it appears as though we're on the right track. I mean, not starting games after 8:00 and trying to end games around 10:00 seems to be not only practical but accepted by the community, and so, I would certainly suggest we move forward with that.
Just as a reminder to those in the room, I have to keep my finger on the button, is the regulations that we have been following since September of 2015 is just a reiteration of what Jack just mentioned. Games and practices not to be scheduled to start after 8:00 p.m. Make every effort to have exterior lights and sound off by 10:00 p.m. on Sunday through Thursday, 10:30 p.m. Friday through Saturday. The sound system being turned off no later than 20 minutes after the end of the event. We've also been doing that with the lights, once we learned how to use them. And the support of the use of building and grounds, including the athletic fields, in accordance with the district's educational, extracurricular, and interscholastic programs." So, that's pretty much what Jack was speaking about. So, are you okay with me putting this on for the next board meeting? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, Barbara, if you could just make note of that, 3280 will go on for a first read August 8th. The second part of that, which I'm also hoping for some conversation, is the facility use fee schedule revisions. So, as I said a moment ago, we actually pulled it from the second read for tonight because there was some conversation regarding daily or hourly charges. So, the floor is yours.
So, from my perspective, the primary concern was in the charge for using the lights. And so, we- it became apparent that what we wanted to do was get it done right and not done fast, and so, we went through some calculations. And it turns out that the use of all of our LED lights for the stadium is, and Donald, correct me if I'm wrong, $7.62 per hour. About, maybe it's $7.64, maybe I'm off by a couple pennies.
It's under $10 an hour.
So, which we were excited about, which we expected, but quite frankly, I didn't realize it would be that low. It's incredibly inexpensive, so for a two-hour practice, it costs 15 bucks to- less than $20 to run lights for two hours.
Jack, could you just mention the startup fee on that, too, so people understand what that means for us?
And again, in our efforts to just to get it right, if the lights are- the first time the lights go on per month slash billing cycle is a per calendar month?
It's per billing cycle.
Okay. There's a $65 startup fee. So, the first time the lights go on, so if, for example, during football season, August or let's say September 1st, the lights go on, there's a $65 one-time charge. Not really a concern because in September, October, even November, the lights are going to be used often, and so, that's spread out over many, many practices and events. Some of the concerns are that in the month of July, when the lights really aren't being used, if we just had one event, it would be that $7.60, say less than $10 per hour fee in addition to a $65 startup fee for just one event. And so, there were concerns that in the months of perhaps June, but certainly July and August, that that fee would only be for one time. And so, we wanted to make sure that any fee that we charged took into account two things. First of all, the fact that the lights are pretty inexpensive to run, but secondly, because there is a startup fee, and if we had no plans for the school district to use the lights, we had to make concessions for that one-time startup fee.
I do want to point out, one of the things that was done in this project, those lights over at the turf field are LED lights. That is why they are, as inexpensive as he's speaking, to run.
And the fact that they're LED lights is no accident, that we understood that they last eight times longer, they are significantly more inexpensive to run, and they are basically brighter, as we can tell right above our heads, that they're really bright. It is my feeling that we're charging $250.00 to turn on the lights based on what is new information, to me at least, that it's so inexpensive to run the lights, we should probably cut that in half or down to $100.00 or $125.00. That way, we're covered for any startup costs, and we certainly will not lose money on running the lights for a particular event. That would be down from the $250.00 that's currently on the fee chart.
And Jack, so Groups 1 and 2, the lights would still be free, and then Groups 3, it's a 50% charge of the $125 or so, what we're looking at, $100.00. And then really, the only one that's paying the full boat on this light fee would be Group 4.
Absolutely, and so, and our feeling is also this, that if, if an organization were to use the facility in the summertime, it's light until 9:30 at night, and so the chance that, they're probably not going to turn them on. Now, if there's a chance that it's a rainy day, or it's cloudy, or whatever, I mean, that could certainly happen, but under many, many circumstances, we're just not going to turn the lights on in the summertime because we don't need to.
So then if you could jump up to where the bullets are, the second, third, and fourth bullet should read Groups 2, 3, and 4, not all groups.
So just Group 1 is free for the lights?
So Group 1 would be in-house. What we have stated is that we have to hire a technician for anything that's being used. So, for example, Lucinda is here tonight. If this were Group 2, 3, or 4, that would be coming into this auditorium, the school district would require a technician to be running the lights and sound, and you can see why, just because of some of the things that we had going on. The same thing would be true if a custodian is not on duty on the, sorry, the fourth bullet, if in fact, and we've always done this before, that the custodian, so that's still not right though, because the lights is in that one bullet. So we do need to make some language changes up above. The personal touch employee, if it's not a school activity, that is not a change. We have always had to pay, they've always had to pay for the employee in the kitchen, that's a health regulation. The technician on the third bullet, that's been the case as well, but now we have the sound board and the lights in the auditorium. That next bullet for the custodian and lights is what's up for conversation based on what I just heard from Jack and Don.
And so Groups 1 and 2 would be free for the lights, but I do agree...
For the lights, right, so...
But the custodian...
Right, so we need to split those out.
I think so, yes.
Yep, I can do that.
And I, I think that's only being reasonable to say...
So Groups 2, 3, and 4 would be required to pay for a custodian if they're not on duty and when using the turf? Okay, and then the lights just won't be listed up there on the bullet. Would that be clear?
Yeah, so the lights would just be down in the bottom part of that page there.
And implied to be free like the rest?
So, so to be clear, we're not talking about the turf, so for Groups 1 and 2, the turf is still free. It's, we're talking about the lights, and the lights would be free for Groups 1 and 2.
I'm reading the bullet, it says all groups will be required to pay for a custodian, and I'm going to add, when they're not already on staff, when using the turf.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay.
But, but the confusion, I think, is lights when using the turf.
I'm going to take the word lights off.
Yeah, yes, and so it's, the turf is free, and the lights will be free for Groups 1 and 2. The custodian would be a charge if we have to bring in one special...
So how about if I just remove the word turf, since it's really not the turf, when using the stadium, when using the athletic stadium?
I think that causes confusion to say turf.
Totally in agreement. So all groups will be required to pay for a custodian when not on staff, when using the stadium?
Fair. And I'm open to a discussion if we cut that $250.00 light fee to $100.00 or $125.00, if, does that seem reasonable to other members of the board?
Yeah, except Group 3 will be paying 50% of that then.
Yeah, correct. So basically, if Group 3 uses it, and it's turned on for the first time, they're basically kind of covering the cost of the light, so...
Still, still break even.
Break even, and what we're making money is on outside organizations that's paying the full boat anyways.
So is it $100.00 or $125.00?
I would say $125.00.
I would agree with that.
I agree with $125.00.
Are there any other hourly or daily charges on the front side of that sheet that you're making a recommendation for a change?
The only thing I would say is where it says lights on the bottom there, it says all groups must pay this charge if lights are used, I would, I would cross that out.
And have it say what?
Basically, lights, and then it basically relates to your classification of groups.
Should probably say stadium lights.
Or it should just say maybe Groups 3 and 4 to pay, because those are the only two groups that pay.
Yeah, or see classification chart above, section 2.
Because none of the other ones make a distinction either. Do you see that?
Yeah.
So if I just take that, that explanation out completely, it would be like all the rest?
Yeah, I would just put, I would put it as stadium lights and leave it, leave it blank from there.
Anything on the back?
Only one thing I'd like to say is, driving here tonight, I noticed five fields were being used, along with the, the front of the elementary school for the concert, all at no charge.
That is true. That is very true. It's a good thing.
It was also brought to my attention, the light by the GLP playground?
Elementary.
The light by the elementary playground is on all the time.
Yeah, it's at least on at 10:00 a.m. when I'm out there with Rec, and it's a pretty sunny day.
I thought you were going to tell me it didn't go on, okay. So, I got it.
People would pay this plus the electric fee? People would pay this plus the electric fee? Plus that?
All right, just one more thing that's not listed up here before it goes on to the business report or the board report. I've asked campus and Young &amp; Wright to come to the August 8th meeting, wherever it lands, to give an update on what we finished, where we are, and where we're going. We had, we have lengthy meetings every week. Today's was about three, three and a half hours, just in terms of progress updates and what we're doing with the fencing, and especially now that we're coming down to the end of the project, you know, money's tight, and so I suspect that that'll be a really great conversation. We are, for the most part, on target with most everything. Hardware, meaning cameras, is still stuck in the school, in the smart schools bond. The phones have been taken out of the smart schools bond, and we've covered them under the capital project. We are going out for a Phase 4 of what we're getting, the designs and drawings, which is some of the rest of the money that we were frugal enough to have left over, which will give us a brand-new P.A. system. Laura, help me.
There'll be clocks, and then the emergency lighting, strobe lighting?
Clocks, P.A. systems, strobe lighting outside the building, and blue lights in the hallways on the inside of the building and in the major meeting rooms, so that if it's allowed in the cafeteria, the pool, the hallway, visually you'll be able to see that we're in a lockout, lockdown, some type of an emergency. That Phase 4 would hopefully be started February of 2019 and completed by May of 2019. It has nothing to do with what we're doing currently, has not been approved by SED yet.
Does that also include the lightning warning system?
No, the lightning warning system, we didn't have enough money to do it. It was in excess of $10,000.00, plus the monthly subscription. Doesn't mean, doesn't mean we can't do it in the future, Paul. We just can't do it on this one. Everything we touch actually ends up costing more money because there's, there's old buildings, and so the moment that you touch, you touch something, you find something behind it that you didn't anticipate. So an example would be the two inches of concrete, which is the standard depth of the floor at all the GEP, GLP rooms. I mean, it's two inches of concrete, that's not very much, with some chicken wire underneath them. The extra ceilings, right, in this room, extra ceiling at GLP in the main entrance, so, so I feel like I'm constantly writing an approval to go ahead with some extra funds to finish everything. And let's not forget abatement. Okay, I'm, I'm good, if you want to move on to the business report. So time for item B, the business report.
Okay, I wanted to update you. We are scheduled for external audit from Drescher-Malecki, August 6 through August 17. They should be on-site doing their field work, and purchasing is moving along. It was slowed down due to the second vote, so it's going on in earnest, and we hope we will be able to get everything in the classrooms in time for September.
Can you just back up and give that a little more explanation? Because I honestly didn't understand it the first time, not tonight, but when you explained it to me before.
What happens is, until we get a positive budget vote, we can't open the software for the staff to enter their purchasing requests. Typically, that's done, and all the purchase orders are printed on July 1. Well, because we didn't have a budget in place the third week in May, we had to wait till the third week of June to open that up. With year-end and all the things that the staff is busy doing for the students, it prolongs our ability to get purchase orders out and get things in a queue for the suppliers. The issue is, every district in New York State is pounding those same suppliers on July 1, so the fact that ours are coming in July 7, 9, 10, they harm our district as far as being in the order to be fulfilled, so it takes a little longer. So the hope is that we'll be able to get everything in classrooms on time for the opening of school. Staff may be severely inconvenienced this year for things that haven't come through because perhaps the shipment doesn't come till the week before school, so there's minimal time to make sure it's right. The business office staff works diligently all throughout the summer. If something's missing in an order, they're trying to find out what happened to it, get it reordered, get it here. All those things are influenced by the fact that we started a month later than normal on our purchasing process. And then the last thing, our year-end, we're working diligently on, to get ready for that audit on August 6, the business office staff, we're in our new surroundings, we're still looking for which box some things are in, but we're getting there, and we're getting everything together for that audit on August 6.
Okay, moving on, moving on to the board report, discussion of prior Board of Education subcommittees, policy, curriculum, technology, et cetera.
You have a list in front of you of the committees you were on last year. Is anybody wanting to change, or be on a different committee, or add a committee, or think that we don't need one of the committees that is on the list? And we will make any changes to those committees' August 8th meeting. So if you want to be on a different committee, let me know, or if you want to add a committee, let me know.
Now, last year, I was the GLP shared decision-making liaison, so I went to several meetings, and they had never had a board member as a liaison, and I think they were kind of puzzled as to what to do with me. I didn't feel like my time was well-spent there, and I really don't want to do that again this year, because I, you know, I think because of the things that they're discussing, they don't really need a board member at, at the building level.
Is your feeling that, that there's no need for a board member on the building level?
At the building level. I could see it for the district, but...
Okay. Anybody else in agreement with that? Do you want me to take it off?
I just have a question, that I was on the junior, senior high school, but now with the middle school, will that just stay the same, or will there be...
So the intent is to have a middle school and a high school? Mark and Jeff are working out all the details. In our original budget proposal with the 2%, you know, if something were to cost money, this doesn't, like a middle school yearbook, a high school yearbook, middle school teams, middle school whatever, those are being reworked because some of those cost money. Shared decision-making doesn't necessarily, it should be separate. Ellen, is it your recommendation that there not be building-level shared decision-making teams?
Well, I, I don't know how, Cheryl, did you... Oh, sorry. Cheryl, did you go to the junior, senior high meetings, or...
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to disagree because...
I never knew, I never knew when there was one.
I mean, Marlene's, Marlene's been...
I went to the elementary, and I go to the high school one. I go to the high school one as, I don't know, as many parts. I went to elementary as many parts. I don't know, as far as board, the only thing I was able to get some insight on things from teachers and staff that maybe they weren't willing, is willing to share in an open meeting that we could bring back to them, but I understand maybe, I don't know, maybe at GLP, it just didn't have that same feeling.
And, well, and that's why I don't want to say not to have it at the, because I don't know how it went. I know Marlene's been on the elementary shared decision-making for many years, but as a parent, too. And, you know, but at GLP, I think because of what they're taking care of, I don't know that, you know, it's, it's very much like what pictures they're hanging on the walls, and, you know, I don't know that a board member needed to be there, and, you know, I'm more than willing to still be part of it, but I'm not sure it was the best use of my time.
I just have a question, like, how do I find out when or where the meetings are? Because I never went to a meeting.
You would look at the updates that each building is sending out. You know how we get those updates? And you just look and see the upcoming events.
We could do a better job of that for you, too. All right, we'll bring it, we'll, we'll have some more conversation on those. Anything else on there that you see as a change, you need something added, you don't want to be on it anymore, you're praying that you don't have to be on it anymore?
Not that I want to make more work for anyone, but I'm, I often wonder why PTA, I mean, I know Marlene goes to almost every single meeting, I go to as many as I can, but not that any one person, I'm just wondering maybe if I'm a rotating, sorry.
As a liaison for PTA?
Right, I mean, they're an important aspect of the school. I don't know if, a lot of stuff does happen there, a lot does come up, and parents do tend to express concerns.
And I think that's a good idea. I'd be willing to do that, to rotate on, you know, yeah.
I need to jump in before we move on off this topic. The Finance and Audit Committee will have to meet before, we will schedule a meeting with the auditors before field work commences, so that's coming up rather quickly. Sorry for the oversight, we will get that scheduled.
So before August 6?
So, if you can send me your dates, I'll send them to the auditors, and we'll work backwards.
Don, did you want to stay on that one for next year?
Any other questions or comments about the committees? Yeah, we can make changes right up to August 8th if anybody has any additional changes.
Okay. I could, and we can do it just between the members. I did want to say that I had an opportunity...
I did want to say that I had an opportunity to attend the high school graduation, and it was an amazing ceremony. It was funny, and I got a little teary-eyed at times, extremely hot evening, but it was, yeah. But it was, it was fundamentally a beautiful ceremony, and it was, it was just great to see all these kids all bright-eyed and ready to go, and it was amazing. It was a packed auditorium, and it was a great night, and it was fun to be a part of it.
I was, I was there as well, and I attended three prior graduations for my two nieces and nephew, and nothing against the three of them, but this was by far the best graduation. And the, I believe it's called Stage Fight, that was given out.
Oh, yeah, that was phenomenal.
That was phenomenal. I don't think there was a dry eye in the auditorium.
And on a different note, even though it's not school-related, the slow roll came through town right by my house, and that was really fun to watch. There were, I don't, I didn't count, because there was a ton of people, but it took a good 20 minutes.
Why weren't you on your bike?
Yes, Ellen and I were on ours.
I heard there were closer to 600 people there than I-
And Barb was there, too.
There were 600-plus riders.
Wow. Yeah, it took a good 20 minutes for the whole caravan of everyone to-
And there were about 800-plus at the after-party altogether, so.
We played in a very important part, we were cooling everyone down, so.
Yes, you, did you hose us? Thank you, thank you very much.
It was my neighbor who took out the hose, but it was-
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And the, at, at that event, the Booster Club ran a successful fundraiser, and another group ran a fundraiser, and a band, and I thought the recreation department did just a phenomenal job, including Amy Porter, with not only bringing a lot of non-Eaton people to Eden, but also showing Eden in terrific light, and it was a really fun time.
I'm on the rec advisory board for the town, so I will be sure to take that back.
Yeah, and I hope we do it again, because it was-
Yes, it's in the making.
Good.
I would just want to point out, my family participated in it, too, and it was a really great experience. And we were talking to Mrs. Porter after, and she was talking about how there's going to be like a star viewing night at Gorska Field coming up, which I think is a really cool thing, how the entire community can just come together and do events like the star thing and the slow roll, and just everyone like come together as a town. It was kind of cool.
It is.
Anything else from the board?
Marlene, do you want to talk about Town Rec, during Summer Rec? Because they're here, they're back at the elementary school.
They're all here. There's over 280 kids enrolled in Summer Rec this year, including Mini Camp, Gorska, Flower Field, and Elementary School. Things are off to a great start. They've been doing field trips, arts and crafts, just playing. It's been nice sunny days, so we haven't been stuck inside the school, we've been able to get out a lot.
Anyone else? All right, future dates, next regular Board of Education meeting is August 8th, 2018, 7:00 p.m. in the Eden Elementary School auditorium. Maybe.
Maybe?
Maybe, it depends on the fans, and the sound, and the lights. I will, I will let everyone know most likely the week before. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any comments or discussions? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Thank you for coming, everyone.
Thank you.